I'm ready. The meeting will come to order. Roll call.
Tom Rosser?
Tom Rosser.
Crystal Lamoran. Andrea Benjamin. Thank you. We have four.
Approval of minutes. They've been distributed. Any questions on them, corrections?
I move to approve the minutes from eleven twenty, twenty twenty-four and twelve eighteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Turning items. Order's going to go in order. Action regarding an update from Home Finance Authority Executive Director David.
Yeah, I circulated to the volume numbers that you mailed to most of the people here. And I have received some supplemental numbers to that. Now, I didn't have a chance to put this in writing, Kathy, but I'll get it to you when I get back next week to this conference. We did six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in volume in twenty twenty-three. Did two hundred, I'm sorry, twenty-four million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, three thirty-seven in twenty twenty-four. Right now, rolling twelve months out, just thirty-two million, five hundred thousand, four thirty-four. I have since received the numbers that I've been waiting up for this report. As you may remember, Tom and Andrew, our MCC program sunsetted at the end of last year. And we had to go through a period getting reinstated, well, this last quarter. Ten in June was the first quarter of the new version of the program. We did do two deals for five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So MCC program is back. Tom, you'll appreciate these numbers maybe a little more than some of the research in the mortgage business, but our scorecard from US Bank, one hundred percent of our loans in the last eighteen months have had a credit score of seven hundred or higher. We have done almost six million in conventional loans and almost twenty-nine million in government loans. And that's pretty typical, that programs like this tend to be, as Mark will know, more FHA related. The numbers I'm pretty proud of, um, our delinquency ratio compared with our peers. Tom, we have not one single delinquent loan in that twenty-four months origination versus two to four percent on our peers. And we're standing at zero. Our pull-through, which for Andrea sent us in, that's the percent of loans that once they're locked in the system, actually closed and made into a pool, has been a hundred percent. Most of the last twelve months, it's never been below ninety percent. The last twelve months, with the exception of April twenty-four, we were at seventy-eight percent. And, um, everything looks good from US Bank. I got pricing from them on Monday. And we qualify once again for tier one pricing, which is their very best pricing they have for a local housing finance agency. So Tom and Andrea, you guys are, uh, keeping a great program going that's easy to sell to lenders. We have added ten lenders somewhere in twenty twenty-five. We added ten in twenty twenty-four. We added two just last week. And, um, the program's doing great. I haven't yet seen the increase in the MCC that we've seen in the turnkey. And I've been concentrating on that for the last couple quarters of the year. But thank you both for putting together a program that is quite easy to sell to lenders. That is my report. Any questions?
Do you, do you know how many units that, that was last year on that twenty-four million?
I do. I meant to cover that. We did, um, one hundred and fifty units in the last rolling twelve months. And in the previous year, we did a hundred and fourteen units. So over a hundred families got into housing.
And one follow-up, it's just math, but what's our average loan amount?
It is just under, um, two hundred thousand dollars, it looks like, from their reports. But the government's a little lower. Um, one thing that I'm very proud of in our program is that eighty-two point nine one percent of our loans have gone to loan to values of ninety-five percent or higher. So the people that need the help the most are the ones getting it in the program. Tom, I don't have that comparison, like, in terms of loan size, but, um, you know, as both a lender and senior of the board, this isn't the easiest program to offer out there compared to a program that doesn't have DPA. And Jared's been talking a bit about Tulsa County. They have done more traditional bond program, repeated it again. Um, but I think their DPA, as well as the Cleveland County DPA, are both, um, have strings attached to them. They're not gifts at closing like ours is, which is one of the things that makes ours so easy to sell to lenders.
Yes.
And Tom, it's Mark O'Brien with Raymond James. I was looking just at a quick action brief for the last thirty days. The average loan size has been two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So it's certainly moving north, you know, as housing prices increase in the city and the county.
Yes.
Thanks for that, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from any of the trustees or anyone else?
No questions. Just moving to number three.
There you go.
Uh, discussion impossible action regarding the dates and time of twenty twenty-six regular scheduled meetings. They're coming up on the board.
Yep.
Do you need action on this? Any motion?
Yeah. I move to approve the post twenty twenty-six scheduled meeting, meeting schedule.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Mark and Jared, are those still tying in with OHFA as I can see on you guys?
Uh, so OHFA has not posted their meeting calendar yet, but this is, I think, as close as we're going to get at this point until they do that. If we need to come back and amend it later, we could certainly do that. But we gotta adopt a regular one before we can amend one. And so I told Cassie I thought that was the best option forward.
Good point.
Right. Sorry, David, not to be there in person today, but the Oklahoma OHFA board meeting was actually last Wednesday.
One of the reasons I asked the question.
Yes, sir. And thank you for that. Appreciate you trying to look it up for Jared and me.
We're going to four. Uh, discussion impossible action regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit of the Oklahoma County Housing Finance Authority. Jared.
Eric Russell, and his firm completed that for us. Before I left for the conference last week, I took over to Jared's office copies that Eric provided. So he said he should have one. And with that, Eric, I will turn it over to you to discuss the findings with the trustees.
Okay, so everybody already has a copy. Perfect. I'm just going to grab one out for myself then. Okay, I will make this short and sweet, unless I get any objections. So the first few pages are the management's discussion analysis, of which are, that contains financials there are basically just restating a little bit different way what, what we do with the main financial statements. If you turn to page one of the report, with our letterhead on it, that's our auditor's opinion. So it's, it's an unmodified opinion, which is what you want. Means we didn't detect any material misstatements or have any other kind of reason to modify the opinion. Um, any kind of misstatements that we caught, we got corrected. No problems there. We did have a couple, just a few adjustments, and I'll, I can provide copies of it all to anybody who's interested. But the gist of it is basically recognizing a lot of that pass-through money. Some of that was recorded into income and then the outflows were recorded into expense. Really, if it's just pass-through money, all we're really doing there is, it's, it's not income or expense to the enemy. Because you didn't have a right to keep it, and it's not really an expense when it goes out. So you're just asking me to pass through. So we did derecognize some of that. Now, it is an expense, like David tried to explain it to me. I think my eyes will be back in my head. But with the loan assistance, like if you're covering additional fees, I, whatever goes out to Raymond James is, is more than what you got in loan assistance, that's going to be the difference, is going to be the expense. But, um, so we made a couple of adjusting entries related to that as well. So page four is your statement of net assets. We do imperatives on you, so you see FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four. Had total assets of four point five million at the end of twenty-four, which is down a little bit. We recognize a liability under the CARES Act, so this, that, ERA funds. So any funds that we have left over at the end of the year, we're recognizing a liability that's equal to the cash balance there. So that's what you're seeing there. That's not like that's something that has to be paid back, obviously. It has to be spent out, obviously, but. So your next statement is your operating revenues, expenses, changes in net assets, your income statement. Had total revenues of a hundred and seventy-one thousand, operating, um, total expenses of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So a little bit of a loss, change in net assets was negative one sixty-seven, eight sixty-six for the year. But you still had a pretty healthy, uh, balance in net assets of two point five million at the end of the year. But of that, approximately one point seven million was that, uh, that federal money, which triggered our single audit once again. Okay, so moving on to the cash flow statement. We had, you have various operating activities at the top. So that's receipt of fees, interest, um, all sorts of things. Um, we did take into account the receipt of the federal COVID-nineteen funds and then the disbursement. So beginning balance of that, plus receipts, minus dispersments on, on that should equal to one point seven million. So we're really just, we're showing that on the cash flow statement, but it's not in, on the income statement. It's not revenue, it's for expense. We had a little bit of principal payments on bonds of seventy-five thousand, proceeds from sales. And your net change in cash was negative two point two million. But you had six point three million at the end of the year. So that ties back to your balance sheet of four point one seven one. Okay, and then you have the reconciliation at the bottom, change in net assets, under sixty-seven, reconciles back up. Let's see, I'm going to brush over some of these various disclosures. Page ten shows a little bit of breakdown of the GMA's owned debt at the end of the year. Um, similarly, you have on page eleven, just a breakdown of the bonds payable. So we have total balance of three hundred and sixty-six thousand on those bonds at the beginning of the year, a little bit of retirement, and two hundred and ninety thousand, that's on page eleven, due at the end of the year. Um, and then below table shows the same activity between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So we give that comparative information too. If we go to page thirteen, this is the current year combining schedule. So we have all of these different tranches of assets divided up into different funds. And so this is just basically combined, we're separating it all out, showing you the detailed information. Let's see, we have the, the admin fund, which I call the tin fund, is holding all that CARES Act money. But then you have various other GMA programs that are, are listed, the two thousand and two C, the ninety-nine C, mortgage origination program over there, the thirty-six fund. Um, so that's just, that will total back to the same that we saw on the first statement, which just combines all that information. Same thing for, if you look at page thirteen, that is your income statement, just again dividing out all that information, giving you the detail. And it ties back to that negative one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight sixty-six down on the bottom right that we saw on the first income statement. So just a little bit different way of presenting the same information so you can get the detail. Um, I'm going to skip over the prior year combining schedules. We've got your, uh, Sifa on page seventeen. So we have to have one of these whenever we do a simple one. It's just showing literally what you're.
Because we only go up to page sixteen and we've been a big behind you.
Oh, sorry. Did it?
Yeah, the number go a little bit.
Hmm, okay. Try. Try looking at mine. Not sure what happened there.
Thank you.
That's identical to mine.
Well, seventeen?
Yes. Okay, so this is the schedule of expenditures, federal awards. So it's just showing the assistance listing number, the name of the program. Um, and this is just all of the COVID money that was passed in and passed out throughout the year. And we saw that on the cash flow statement too, but we have to have that statement on there for the single audit. We have various footnotes related to the, uh, to the Sifa on the next page. I don't know if there's really anything worth covering there. And the next couple of pages is our, our governmental audit report, which we also have second. We've got the single audit reports on the next few pages. So to summarize, on page twenty-four, I think that, that should be the last page. And just, it's scheduled findings. So we've got an unmodified report. No material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies, uh, no non-compliance material financial statements. So everything was pretty clean. We did have to make those adjusting entries, but really it's pretty easy to see what was going on. And again, I can, I, I think I've given David a copy of those, but if not, I'll, I'll send them over to you. Um, I've also provided a copy to, uh, to DWD. So they should have everything they need to adjust and get everything rolled over to the next year. But we didn't really have any problems. I was able to identify everything that didn't look quite right and get it squared away pretty quickly. Excellent. So, uh, I know I kind of, I didn't breeze through this stuff because it's boring, but does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions, but I know I'm going to want to move to defer the vote on this, so we have time to read that report since we just got it. So that's going to be.
Yeah, sure. Okay, let's go.
Six?
I'm going to move that we defer the vote on this so that the trustees have time to read the audit report and we can move it to the next agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to, I won't leave you now, but I will leave you several others here, just so you have extra copies. Um, because it seems like something got messed up in your brain or something. Maybe you sent you the wrong one, I don't know.
I have all these copies, or do you want to redo that one? I'll have to get one.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll give you a, I've got, um, copy, so.
Eric, what questions should we ask you?
I, I don't know. You know, everybody's a little different. I mean, sometimes I, I don't get any questions when I present these things. And, um, I, I don't know if there's really anything worth noting here. The main things that I already, kind of got our attention, I already mentioned to you, which is kind of the nature of the adjusting entries that we had to make. But again, that was something we moved past pretty quickly. I'm able to get in there and see, oh, you have, you know, six point four billion in revenue here, right? That doesn't look right. And then, okay, it's just, it's just receipt of CARES money and then it's, it's in and out. So, um, you know, they, they recognize that we're going to adjust that whenever we get the compilation, wherever, whenever we get the trial downs and start looking at the GL, and so. And maybe the trustees don't know, but when we first received the first project CARES money, we opened a subaccount in the administrative account. And so we have purposely funneled all of those deposits into that one account for, for Eric, you know, purposes. That way they can see exactly what comes in, what goes out, you know, they get the bank ledger detail, you know, all of that kind of stuff. And so there, there have been some, you know, some very large deposits and some very large accounts, but those have all tied to like the ERA program or, you know, the ARBA. You know, that's where all of those funds have been. And if you hadn't done it that way, it would be an absolute. Thanks for your day. We, we had a little.
Uh, any other discussion on that one? Number four. Moving. Uh, number five, discussion impossible action. Uh, possible action with respect to rescinding award of American Rescue Plan Housing Progress OKC in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three.
Um, so five and six are similarly related. Um, you guys may be aware, um, we originally awarded five projects. One, uh, for the Alley's End project, which was the largest chunk, two hundred and fourteen unit apartment complex, which is now under construction for a million dollars. Then we had four other awards, uh, Collective Strategies, um, Urban League and Community Action Agency and Progress OKC. Those were all for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Progress OKC's application stated that they wanted to build, uh, two duplexes, um, with their two hundred and fifty thousand dollar award. And they were going to partner with Neighborhood Services organization. Since then, their partnership with Neighborhood Services hasn't gone exactly the way they thought. Uh, they were not able to identify parcels, um, without basically having to spend the whole amount of money just to tear and rehab property and start from scratch. And so they notified us, uh, in late April, um, that they would be withdrawing their application and would not be able to proceed with the project, uh, kind of as we. Um, and so my, we don't have any other projects that were on our previous list of approved projects. And so I, I want you guys to kind of tell me what you want me to do. Um, my suggestion would be that we go back to either Urban League and Community Action Agency. They were the two that got their projects done the quickest. Um, both, and we could obtain, I think, the similar, a similar amount of units, um, based on what our original proposal was. And so trying to keep things, you know, all, all things being equal, um, that would be where I would go. Um, Alley's End is still under construction. We've expended all of our award funds to them, but it's, it's combined. They can't add any units to that structure at this point. Collective Strategies, similarly, they've expended all of their ARPA award, but the site that they have won't allow them to add additional units. And so I think my recommendation would be for you to direct me to go back and have these discussions with Urban League and Community Action Agency to see if they can fulfill, um, the terms of the award. Um, we're right at the eighteen month mark. We've got basically seventeen months left for these dollars to be expended. Uh, every dollar has to be expended by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Can't be obligated, it has to be spent. Uh, and so it, it, timing is kind of of the essence. And so I, I defer to you guys, um, gladly take your suggestions on, of what you want me to do.
Before you guys speak to that, Jared and I did talk about this, and I, in concurrence with his opinion from a timing standpoint, to, to go with the organizations that we know are doing it right and can get it done. And it just makes it a better process and, and less stress to get it done by the time we have to either spend it or send it back.
There, there might be an opportunity for both of them to do a project. You know, we could, we could offer them a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars piece and say, what can you do for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? Um, you know, they're, that, that was about their average cost on the first two units, all in acquisition, rehab, you know, kind of getting it ready to rent. And so if, I, I'm sure they would take the money if we went back.
Two questions, I don't know, Tom, but two questions is, one, um, were there any projects that originally applied and didn't get funded that you thought were promising? Or two, is there any value in seventeen months? I guess it's not a lot of time, but is there any value in opening it up to a new call so that someone else could get the two hundred and fifty thousand and do something productive with it?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly the, I mean, certainly an option. Um, you know, we had the city's, um, kind of housing crew, like vetted those because they kind of filtered through. We funded every viable project, um, that was kind of determined on the city's list. Um, I mean, sure, we could certainly, you know, open up a new RFP and, and have everybody respond, you know, kind of accordingly that way. Um, and, and it'd probably require us getting that out, uh, and then probably having a special meeting, you know, before our next meeting to approve those. That way, everybody kind of understood the timeline and time frame, um, you know, to work on.
What was the timeline the first time for the projects to be submitted and sort of how long did that take for them?
Yeah, uh, about sixty days, uh, is what we had it open for originally. Um, and basically Oklahoma City had completed their ARPA call projects. They funded ten or eleven projects through all of the money they had. Um, and then they basically sent out, hey, you know, Oklahoma County has an additional two million dollars. Would you still be interested in rolling over, you know, kind of your project? So that's, that's kind of how we did it. We can do either or.
I'm personally inclined to opening it up. That's just my personal preference. I don't mind having a special meeting. I think that there's a lot of need. And so if someone, you know, obviously sixty days maybe isn't a lot of time for an organization. They probably have to already have a plan, which could result in these two previous awardees being at the top of the list because they already have something in place and then they could just reapply. Um, but I just personally want to see if we can open it back up, um, to see if there's other organizations that would want to compete. That's just my feeling.
True.
Knowing, I mean, obviously being clear in the call that they have a very limited time. So they would need to know that they could execute on that.
And then a limited time to spend.
That's right.
That's right.
We have another one of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah. And so, I don't know. That's just my preference on it.
Need a motion on five?
Need a motion to rescind.
Okay.
On the five.
I, I move to rescind the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars previously awarded to Progress OKC.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On six.
And then on six, I would just, you know, uh, assemble an RFP, uh, to send out for similar housing projects. Distribution.
I move to develop an RFP to, to request applications to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, and it will be due in sixty days.
Yep.
That's good.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving to seven, discussion impossible action with respect to ratifying OC HFA's directors and officers liability policies.
Uh, those aren't attached. Uh, I think you've seen those. Um, we've actually already paid those, uh, because they were due at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, I don't think there was anything out of line. Um, the quote has been pretty similar in the last several years, and so we're just asking for your ratification.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you have a copy of it so you can see what it entails and some of it protects you in the event of, of something untoward happening with the authority.
I move to approve the insurance policy.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, number eight, uh, happy to report we don't have to allocate, uh, any funds. As a matter of fact, um, we just submitted the last quarterly report. Um, the only things that remain unspent are, the city of Edmond has approximately forty-one thousand dollars left to spend. Um, the only things that remain unspent are, the city of Edmond has approximately forty-one thousand dollars left to spend for this quarter. Um, the period of performance ends on September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and then we have some administrative holdback money that we've been waiting to send out. Um, you know, on the administrative compliance side to make sure that the whole award got expended, uh, in compliance with the contract. So those will all be fulfilled, uh, by September thirtieth. Uh, we'll have one more quarterly report, um, that'll be due in October. Uh, and then we'll have a closeout report, um, that could probably be due the end of January. Um, that was the timeline on ERA one, uh, you know, with, so, um, broad strokes, um, we spent almost fifteen million dollars on emergency rental assistance, housing stability, support services, those kinds of things since the beginning of twenty twenty-one, um, and impacted just about forty, a little over forty-five hundred house funds.
Who's we?
Uh, OCHFA's. Yeah, the counties, yeah, the counties ERA two dollars. So the county got a full, um, federal awards of fourteen point nine million dollars, um, for the emergency rental assistance program. Those monies have also been spent on, you know, families in Oklahoma County. So that needed the most throughout the pandemic.
Great news.
No action? Nope. And?
Go ahead. Nine.
Do it again. Yep. So you guys might remember about this time last year. You authorized us to submit a joint proposal with Ocarta relative to the MAPS four project. Um, we had a different set of operators and participants, uh, back then. The city has since reopened, um, that RFP process and Ocarta has a desire to respond. It also requires a governmental partner, um, you know, basically, uh, to support. Uh, and so Brandy is here to walk you through what that proposal might look like, um, and ask for your consent to serve as the governmental partner on that project.
Hi, this is what I said at the table. My apologies. Uh, I did bring, uh, like one waiter with me, so. Might be able to have stuff.
Brandy, is that same one you had in RPD?
A little bit, yeah. But I already printed it, so the trees have already been cut down, so we're gonna, we're gonna take one down. I also wrote, I like a concept art of like where our brain is headed as far as what it might look like. I, I know this is the dream stage, but you know, I like to, I like to look at that too. Um, helps me stay motivated late at night, right? Um, so, but as, uh, Jared was saying, and then I had a meeting with, with David, which I, I appreciate both of them giving me this time and also you guys allowing me on the agenda. But my name is Brady Boar. I'm the executive director of Ocarta. These notes aren't because I don't know enough about this. It's because if I don't have these, we'll be here all day because I know too much about all of it. But Ocarta is the Oklahoma Citizen Advocates for Recovery and Transformation Association. So I'm here on behalf of them to request your partnership as the formal governmental oversight um, for the MAPS four temporary crisis housing category. And we want to do this as a supportive housing project. This project would be trauma-informed, peer-led. It would be a residential campus designed specifically for individuals transitioning out of mental health crisis centers, incarceration, or experiencing, uh, chronic unsheltered homelessness. Um, this project is about reaching people at the most vulnerable transition points in their lives and providing stabilization, structure, and peer-driven support. Uh, that would be rooted in lived experience and recovery. Uh, as you can see on the picture there, it would be, you know, five to six, uh, homes. That would all depend on, right, money. Uh, and then that long house there would be our stabilization unit. That would be where we would have thirty percent of our residents that would be in the short-term area. So that would be thirty to sixty days that we would have them, um, there. And that would also have a commercial kitchen in there, shared group spaces, a medication station. And, uh, like, they would have their own rooms though, and maybe like a shared bathroom between two individuals. But that area would be where they're coming directly from those places. The other, I would say, like fraternity or sorority style houses, because it's for like ten to twelve people, the two-story ones, um, those would be the residents that would be seventy percent of our overall capacity of ones that would be paying to live there. However, it would be, uh, at a modest rate for actual affordability. And I, you know, I say that because sometimes affordable housing, it, it's not affordable, but we do it at a rate that is. So it would be like five hundred dollars a month, but they would have their, their, uh, their room. And we would want it to be in a space that wasn't like a closet, you know? So we've been doing, uh, recovery housing or transitional housing, um, for a decade now. And so we do have proficiency in this model and being able to do it well, um, without any specific funding to it itself. Um, but we want to be able to do this on a bigger scale where we're able to, um, have the bones in place where we're not having so much overhead also that's taking up most of our, our programming costs. So I know you're not the city I have to sell it to, but I need you guys because without the, you guys helping us with the project, you know, uh, we can't move forward. But anyways, all the services at the campus would be delivered by certified peer recovery support specialists. If you don't know what they are, they are people with lived experience and they have professional training. In recovery, they also have professional mental health training. Um, what that means is they can't diagnose, um, or prescribe any type of things like that. We would partner with, because this would be located with the other MAPS four projects surrounding us with, uh, North Care, Palomar, and, uh, diversion hub, which all have those more clinical type services surrounding us. We would, however, have along with that a clinical director. We just wouldn't be billing for those type of services. We would just have that clinical oversight because with our type of housing that we already provide on our own, we provide case management and things like that. So even though we don't charge yet, right, because we can't. But we like to make sure we have that level of care available because our peers that we help, you know, they deserve that level of care, whether it's getting paid for. So, you know, we figure it out. It's all about finding people that are passionate over pay and trust me, it's a skill that I've had to develop over the years. Uh, but, so, but to be clear, we aren't asking for any money from you, but I did hear RFPs. So just know I, you know, I might know of a place that could use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to maybe help with the project for housing. But I'm just, you know, it's there. You gotta put it out there in the universe if you want it to come back to you. But we're, right now in this moment, we're asking you to be named as the formal oversight body. Uh, you would participate in quarterly oversight check-ins, so that's four times a year. Um, signing off on any required MAPS four documentation as our public partner. Those are all listed on that. Um, and then a role of accountability and partnership, not for funding or direct operations. Just saying, yes, we would make sure that we go to these check-ins and be a part of, um, overseeing the oversight of this project. Um, and no, I don't have a whole lot of other details because it was very limited within the proposal of everything they were asking of the government oversight. Because I need to have one in place, but they didn't give me a whole lot of details besides the points that I gave you. So I'm giving you what I've been given, but I can give the proposal more if needed. It is still the same as the one you and David were involved in before in Zappies. The main thing they changed was their specifics before on having thirty percent for short-term housing, the thirty, sixty days. And the other part, uh, it could be longer term, which is nine months. So that's why we have made the changes. Um, but, but, but with everything, and that being said, I know that you guys have the same type of missions between this and then what David does, uh, well, between the two things, because it's confusing. Because I know he has another job too, kind of. But like, that, that I know that we both are working around housing instability, but also, um, making sure that we're helping people stay out of a recidivism and emergency system cycling. And you guys are doing it from a housing perspective. We do it from a housing perspective along with substance use, um, disorder and mental health challenges and employment. But you guys also have to help in a way because without housing, we can't do all those other things too. So it makes sense for us to come together on this because we're, we all know that having this safe, affordable housing is going to be what helps individuals get to a point where they can be one of those people that have paid their mortgage for two years with your, you know, that, that's the goal. Because for me, even if they leave and they go through that entire program, uh, that we're proposing here, you know, if they transition from here, and I, I say on a report that they got their own permanent housing, even though, say, the department of, or any department or oversight agency says, oh, yeah, getting their own apartment, that's permanent housing. It's really not. Because for me, permanent housing is signing a deed, right? And that, and to me, and I've, I've talked about that before, is that's what the whole goal is, is to stop making poverty profitable. And the only way we can do that is to start empowering our individual residents and our, and the participants we have becoming their own, their own individual owners. So that's, that's a real goal for us. And that's what we try to do is help them build up themselves financially and how they can do that. But it takes time. So, um, anyways, that's all I have. If you have any other questions. I'm gonna sit down for a second because that was a lot, alright.
You're ten years in?
I'm fifteen in.
For Ocarta?
Yeah.
How do you get funding right now?
Um, so we get funding through, kind of, through ODMHSAS, at least until September thirtieth. That's only guaranteed till then, but normally through then, them. But we have been for the last two decades, so that's all I have affirmatively from that. I hope that's a fair statement because that would be what anybody would say, I think. I also, we also receive funding through Ocart, through different county grants. Sorry, through different county grants that we have, um, in the southwest region. Um, because we also have another location there. Um, and then our other funding sources specifically for this project, not that we haven't thought, like that would be literally what we do. This other building here would be where we would move all our administration. And so everything we're doing, where we're at right now, would go here. Like we'd put it all in right here. And so the almost million dollars we do receive through all of the grants would then, like, we would take the operations part, put it here and be able to work within that. And then, but the main long-term goal is because we want to do the commercial kitchen inside of doing the group, uh, for the, the thirty percent housing. We want to utilize that to turn our model that we've had of our Recover Three Cafe inside North Care we've had there. Um, it is smaller, but it has been profitable even at, uh, costs or at, at a rate that's not too expensive because we've kept it affordable for people of all ranges, whether they work in this industry or they receive benefits. We want it to be affordable for people to get a, a good grilled cheese sandwich or whatever, right? But we could duplicate that because where we make the money isn't any catering jobs. And being able to take that and put it in that kitchen and then utilize the people that would then be residents, utilize that as a training perspective and then also a job, but also a way to bring income to bring back into it. So you, using that and their rent that they're paying in, using those two is how I want it to be able to be self-sustaining within itself. The grants, everything else is the, you know, the icing, the, oh, good. But also not be like, well, I have funding until September thirtieth. So, um, that's, that is the, that is the ultimate goal. Um, because when I'm running the different numbers, even at sixty percent capacity, um, we would still be able to, if we, if we're at sixty percent capacity at the six houses, um, we're able to clear a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and I'm, I'm saying in, in revenue, my business friend mind, he's like, yeah, you mean profit? I'm like, no, we're nonprofit. We say revenue. He's like, you mean profit? I'm like, just stop. So anyways, but I mean, that, that's the thing is because everything, you know, is gonna, obviously is gonna go back into itself. Um, but, you know, we've seen that we can do a lot of different things. But being able to have our recovery community and then being able to build off itself or back into itself, whether it's helping them with job history that we've done as well, even on a small scale inside of North Care. You know, we can show that it can make profit, that it, you know, we just have to translate it into something that's bigger. So we've already done that. We have things in place. It's just we'd be able to take where we're at in all these pieces. We already have four sustainable, larger recovery homes that we have in four different places. And then we already have our main site and we already have our cafe. It's just taking all that, putting it here, the city pays for it, and then we just operate it, but not have to have all that overhead. So, uh, I don't have all those numbers in front of me, but I do have them, you know, on a spreadsheet, like eighteen different spreadsheets, but.
And MAPS, they're providing money for construction.
Right, and that's.
And not operations.
Right, and that would be all on us is the operations, right? And it wouldn't fall on you anyways, even if we failed at the operations or the budget line. It wouldn't, yeah, it would just be like, they would revisit and go, yeah, sorry, you gotta go. So it would still.
I, I think that's a good, like, clarification is, you know, we're really the oversight function for the MAX dollars as they're kind of filtering.
And I, yeah.
And back soldier.
Are you the oversight partner on anything else?
That'd be very similar to what we've done for the ARPA award, uh, and ERA, to be, you know, completely honest with you. I mean, it would, it, it would be kind of the same, similar in and out. We would establish a new account. That way, you know, only those dollars, you know, kind of come in. Um.
Yeah, because I don't know, well, I don't, yeah, so you, or I don't, I, there's not any money coming to us for it. We would just be able to help with the concept design and like, because we're not receiving any direct funds from the city. And they're very specific that I have to have this plan. Because it is a fifteen-year cycle for operating, but I have to show five years at a time. Well, obviously it's year to year. I mean, at any moment, if they're like, you're, ooh, then we're out. So I mean, it's, I, I appreciate it though because I, I wouldn't want another project for the city at all. And then, you know, a few years later, it's a desolated whatever building that we poured in as taxpayers all this money. Because like, I'm just as furious when I see a school that's just sitting there and I'm like, man, we could really use that for something, you know? So I, I appreciate that they're wanting to stay on top of that stuff, so.
Just out of curiosity, how many people do you currently serve through the current model?
Uh, our current model, we house between twenty-six and thirty to thirty-two people. And then that, and that's, uh, with and without children. So if it is with children, it can be up to thirty-five. It does depend on the age of the kids. Because, you know, if we have our, um, we have a, a house that's, that serves mostly pregnant women. So, uh, with newborns, you can, you can have a couple more newborns than you could, you know, older kids and things like that. So that's why that number can fluctuate, but.
And then what would this bring the capacity to?
Uh, this capacity is, let's see, so that's twenty. Uh, it would bring it to between seventy to eighty-five would be the capacity, yeah. Um, the, because the, if the, so the, the boarding, the long, well, I'm just calling blockhouse. I don't. Anyway, so I'm not an architect. So, but this long house in the middle here, this one with the thirty percent. So that number is dependent on what, what we would need the other seventy percent to be to cover the cost of operations. So if, what, whatever capacity we think we can serve to operate on needs to then of that be thirty percent, the, the thirty to sixty day housing. So it kind of depends on where we're at. I would, I, I think even with the staff I have right now, if I was to double it, I would, I would have to increase by two to three staff members. So that, I mean, that's how I'm gauging it right now by, by my math-ing. But I also know that, um, that I, I'm taking in other factors like the unknowing of where our fiscal year twenty-six and beyond is. Because I don't have any contracts in hand. So it's hard for me to do a lot of hard math, but I also know inside of the RFP or, or the proposal from the city that there were a couple of the items on there that are like, if you don't. If you don't quite know everything on these, it doesn't mean you're out, but I'm not one to. You know, one of them is the financial piece, like, so if you don't really have this figured out, it's okay, but I'm not one to kind of like let that be. So I'm gonna give them quite a few options. So that's what I've just been doing is kind of running it three or four different ways and say. Like, this is what it looks like if we do this, or this, or this, or this. Um, because I think that was probably why last time it was rejected. Also because it wasn't really focused on, um, like how it would work. Like in act, it was more based on theory versus how we would actually do it. Um, so I'm just grateful it got to be opened back up and, and I, I'm pretty sure they're focused on this government oversight too. It's so that smaller nonprofits would have an opportunity because it would have government oversight attached. And, yeah, and, uh, you, I, I would have probably asked the department, they're also a funder. And they also have a lot of other things going on right now and I can't even get a letter right now from them, but I'm gonna get one. I don't know which person's gonna give it to me, but I'm gonna try real hard. But I'll get it, even if I have to sit up there and wait.
Let's have a last question. This is a kind of a big footprint. Do you have any proposed sites for where y'all?
Uh, they have it pitched, yeah. So it's, uh, by the Linwood Boulevard diagonal. Um, so it's like that Walker Sixth area. Um, so it's kind of looks like a slice of pizza there, uh, like this. So this part here and here in the diagonals here, they already have been putting or broke ground in that area where they're putting. Uh, like diversion hub, um, I keep saying Palomar, I'm pretty sure that's right. The, the, you do domestic violence. Yes, I am saying it, okay. I work with them, I did, you know, um, I skipped my breakfast, so.
The original plan was that would be a campus.
Yeah.
Right, kind of like a whole supportive campus.
But it is still, they're all right there in that area, but the proposed site for this would be right there and I think they're across the, the. The, that road right there. So it's still all right in that area. So it's developing a pretty underserved area, but also an area that's close to other people. Because there's a lot of camps that we already serve in that area, so it's, I mean. Um, we already serve a lot of, uh, of, of people that are there, so it'd be great to be able to be like, hey. You know, when we said we didn't have anywhere like camo, yeah, it'll, it'll be, it'll be nice. It's by Jesus House and they've always got people that are outside, then we've got, uh, city hair, area too, so, you know. There's a lot of potential right there too.
Not a lot of risk or else.
No.
Is it David's time that we're doing quarterly chickens?
Yes.
That's like the physical presence on the property.
Yeah, typically, those, so typically, I mean, what we've seen in other models, like in the MAPS four is, you know, there's kind of a weekly update. And then they'll do like a quarterly onsite, you know, progress check, so that's how.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be planning on doing that, Tom. Jared and I are actually going Monday to one of our existing projects to do an onsite. Uh, walk through on it.
They know more than I do about this process, but I'm excited about that. I know, right, but it's fine.
Alright, well, I will move to support this proposal to be the sponsor for Ocarta's proposal for church housing.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate that so much, y'all. I talk a lot, I apologize for that.
Randy had the short turnaround because of the Phoenix.
Yeah, it is. That's okay though. Uh, I'll just shoot something over to David and you for that work.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Simon. You're a serious man. Yes. But yeah, yeah, of course, of course, no, no, of course.
How's the, how's this one gonna work?
Okay, you, yeah, you need a motion to go into executive session.
I move to go into executive session.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the three of us are gonna go across.